Thank you for joining us this evening, the regular scheduled council meeting of Park City City Council on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at seven P. M. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare, George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bob Darnell is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge of our bid, please stand.
Heavenly Father, come before you, the seedling God. Lord, we praise you, Lord, for you are the creator of all. Given us, Lord, evidence in everything that we see in life, that you are God. And Lord, the seedlings, topics are brought up, and decisions are weighed, and votes are cast. Lord, give this council wisdom, Father. Lord, I thank you for each and every one of those men and women that are upon this council and those that, Lord, that are in leadership of this city we call home. Lord, for the firemen, Lord, policemen, Lord, that dedicate their lives to our safety. Lord, I thank you, Father. Lord, bless the solid gathering, Lord. Lord, as men and women have gathered to hear debates. Lord, we know that there's one debate that has been made, that is through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. He gave his life for all. The Lord blessed this meeting, the seedling, Father, in your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equalized all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Tonight, we have several things under awards and presentations, and we'll start with Park City Pride. Jan?
... today, this might like, this one, we had, and we did it by weeks, and we had houses in one, two, and three. So, we're going with this, a good word, a good place, and we're talking about, and we got it. And the last, after you finished, what's the other issue? Thank you. Second question, Charlie? Yeah, Ward Two, first class was Tom and Jessica Nelson. Second place in Ward Two was Ben and Denise Staley. And we were able to tell them, yeah, the favorite, uh, two, three, four. On the air, third Ward Three, our first place winner, was Martha Doherty, for a hundred dollars. That's your grandson? He's a one of the, you know, the one, the highest.
After Park Street Center, like, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your appreciation.
Enjoy it, and congratulations. And second place winner was Rick and Dom Patterson. And they are our winners, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan. Next, we have an introduction of a new employee. Anna?
I'm very happy this evening to announce and introduce our new Assistant Director of Public Works. This is Zach Day. And Zach is a lifelong Park City resident. Now, how cool is that? So, he's excited to be able to give back to his home community and serve Park City, and we're excited to have him come on board. He leaves his position with Cedric County, where his references said that he was identified as a leader and was one of their best. And he was the area foreman for Cedric County's North Yard, so that means that he's very familiar with this, this end of, of the county. So, that's a great benefit to us here in Park City. He was responsible for the maintenance of approximately two hundred miles of roads, which included gravel and asphalt, road maintenance, culvert repair and replacement, right-of-way mowing, traffic sign replacements, snow removal, and adhering to the priorities of environmental resources through the recycling of materials and adherence to stormwater regulations. He has extensive training, yes, we say yes as well. Zach has extensive training and experience in supervision and leadership. We're very happy to have him come on board here, and we look forward to him bringing his experience to our city, so we're going to let him say a few words.
All right, thank you, Dana.
I, I won't speak long, I really don't have anything prepared. I just would like to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve a community that I have lived in my whole life. Very passionate about my, you know, my work and, and this area that, you know, this field that I, I'd worked in for the past twenty-plus years. One thing I'd like to say is, when I left, you know, when I left the county, you know, I, I thought I was home, but this past week, going on a week and a half, I know that I'm home. So, thank you guys for the opportunity and look forward to seeing you guys and, and working for, for our community, so thank you guys very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Zach. Next, Mayor Rice. And Dana, would you come up? We have a presentation for you.
And I know that was a hard act to follow, but I am very honored this evening to be standing by the very first mayor of Park City. So, we are going to be able to recognize him this evening for his service to the city. Want to just take a little bit of a step back, and there are people that are sitting on this council and that are watching at home that remember all of this because they lived through it, so this is very exciting. In nineteen eighty, prior to becoming a city, Park City was an improvement district. It had been an improvement district for twenty-seven years. The population at that time was three thousand seven hundred thirty-eight residents. It was a hard-fought battle with Cedric County and the city of Wichita, but the people here were very determined to become a city. Some of you can remember how hard that fight was. On Wednesday, November nineteenth, nineteen eighty, the Cedric County Commission voted unanimously to approve cityhood for Park City. And if you look on your monitors, you can see the young dapper mayor of Park City. So, it was a three-way race for mayor between Ron Darlington, Dell Wilson, and Raymond Rice. Ray at that time was a bank supervisor. He grew up in Park City, and he said that he felt like he would be an objective mayor. He thought a wide range of people would come to him with their problems because he was both a hometown boy and he was a newcomer at the same time because he had moved away from Park City in nineteen sixty-eight, and he had only recently moved back. He said that he would take all of the information, he would evaluate it, try to decide what was the most important thing, and then guide the council on a lot to do. The first election was held on Tuesday, May seventeenth, nineteen eighty-one. This was a double celebration for Ray because it also happened to be his thirty-sixth birthday. One of the things that was thought to have cinched the election for Ray was that he had strategically planned a very last-minute telephone blitz where he was making personal contact with residents at that time. Ron Darlington, who had been his biggest opponent, and he had worked for the Improvement District, and he also had been very involved in the efforts to become a city, he described this political maneuver as a complete surprise and a brilliant move. Ray was sworn into office on Sunday, March first, two P. M., at the Community Building. Now, we know that's where, as we started, we had all of our council meetings, and it was officiated by Cedric County Commissioner Don Gragg, and there was a reception that followed. On Thursday, March fifth, nineteen eighty-one, at eight P. M., Park City held its first city council meeting at the same location. Following the roll call, Mayor Raymond Rice called for the first order of business, which was the election of the council president. That was the first of many actions, and he served for mayor from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-seven. He was quoted as saying, "We all have to work together to make things happen." Mayor Rice, we thank you for your leadership. We thank you for leading at such a historical time for our city, the foundational time being the first mayor and making things happen for Park City. In recognition of your leadership and service to the city, the mayor and council are naming two streets in your honor, Raymond Rice Street and Raymond Rice Court.
Mayor?
I am old.
Mayor Ray, if I could just stand by Ray or Ma- Mayor Ray for one more time. Ray and Ray.
This is exciting for me because I worked for this guy.
You were my boss.
And I was a young man a long time ago, so it's so cool to have you back today and be able to listen to you for everything you do. I appreciate it. George and Phil and everybody else. Thank you. My voice is, well, good speech, but, um, Chad, we've had a long run, and it's very great. This is beautiful, and I'm really glad. I'm glad you took it, and we love you. Thank you.
Always this exciting time when we get to recognize previous leaders, new staff members, and, and residents of the, of the town for what they're doing. Our next item on the agenda is public forum. We've got several people signed up. Public forum is an opportunity where you get to have five minutes to come in from the council and just get to address us. Dean, you're signed up for public forum. Did you have anything?
Okay.
Same with Jewel?
Okay.
Kay Ward?
We have a concern of a business on Hydralik down just north of Forty-Fifth and Hydralik that, in our eyes, is a public nuisance noise-wise. You can hear the thumping of the music and the, um, everything from inside your house with all of the windows closed and doors closed. And when you step outside, you feel like you're at the party. We had come to a zoning meeting a few weeks ago and found out we were at the wrong place, so we were told to come here. So, and I know that they're asking for another big building to be put on that property, so we have a major concern.
And I know we might have several people signed up to speak about this, so Sean, I'm going to let you go ahead and address what we're currently working on, and then I'll come back to everybody else.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple of weeks ago, for planning and zoning, there was a permit request brought before them to build a storage shed on the residential portion of the property. I think many of you are familiar with the property. There's a small front corner of it on the northeast corner of that lot that is zoned industrial, and they have a building on that that they hold events in, but then the back portion of the lot is zoned residential. So, the applicant was coming forward to bring, wanting a permit to build a storage shed on the residential portion of it. The applicant was unable to make the meeting that night, and so the issue was tabled until the next planning and zoning commission.
Thank you. Mary?
My name's Mary, I'm right there, and I live directly across the street, and we hear squealing tires, and this music will go until after midnight, a lot of times. And you can have your TV turned up, and you still hear it. We bought brand-new windows, and it did help some, but we're out that money just because of the neighbors across the street with the loud noise. And, uh, like I said, you hear squealing tires, partying, kids are running over there. You can hear them after midnight, little kids screaming and hollering if you go out on deck. I've been out on the deck, and I've called the cops quite a few times, and I hate doing it because I don't think it's that much of an emergency to call nine-one-one. So, I called the alternate number, and they told me, no, you need to call nine-one-one and tell them it's not an emergency. But I feel bad because I'm taking away from somebody else that might have a bigger emergency. And all we're trying to do is tell them to tune it down, and the cops will come, and they'll turn it down, and an hour later, it's back up. So, all we're doing is asking for some help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Martha? Stephanie?
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Chris, and I have the same concern. So, this property that we all received a letter about on Hydralik Street, it does have that front portion that is zoned industrial and that, that building is on, that they use as a venue, and they play, play very, very loud music at it and have huge parties at. Um, that property, that portion of the property is zoned industrial, and that's just a very, very small front corner of that property. Right across the driveway from that is zoned residential. That's where all the cars park for this, this venue. I mean, there can be twenty to fifty probably, I don't even know, I haven't counted, but a lot of cars park on that residential side. So, the residential portion is actually being used for the industrial portion, if that makes sense. So, um, that's where, I guess, like, the legality part will come into play because I know that Park City doesn't have a noise ordinance, I was told, but there is sort of like a nuisance, I don't know, ordinance, I don't know what you call it, but something to do with that, and it is a huge nuisance. I have small children that are up super late at night because this is going on till midnight or later on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, sometimes Sunday nights. It's extremely loud. We call the cops. Probably one of us in our neighborhood calls the cops on them at least once a weekend, sometimes twice. Sometimes I've called Friday, Saturday, excuse me, and Sunday evening, and like they said, like, they will show up eventually, probably because they're busy somewhere else and take care of the situation as much as they can, but then, you know, a little bit later, the volume increases again, the bass is booming, my kids are screaming because it's so loud, and it's, it's a huge nuisance. It's a huge nuisance. So, our concern, when we got this letter, was that they were going to build this other huge shed, call it on the, you know, put it on the residential portion of their property, and then host even bigger parties. So, that's our main concern for that shed, is, is that's what he's going to turn it into, is another venue, which we don't want, because it's already such a huge problem. So, um, yeah, and I would just also ask, like, um, I don't know, were the residents that were affected years ago when that was zoned industrial, were they all notified of?
When you go through that, then yes, we have. Everybody's got to be notified.
Everybody would have had to have been notified. Um, to you, um, like, what about the alcohol permits and things like that? Would, would we have had to have been notified of, like, them allowing alcohol or being, having, like, a liquor license, that kind of stuff on the property?
No.
Or for that property?
No, not for a liquor license.
Okay.
Right, Doug.
I mean, we've heard, like, fights, and we have actually some video footage of, like, how loud it is standing, like, on our decks, and we can see through the trees, we can see, like, where they're parking on, like, the residential side of their, their, um, property. And also, like, the, the very, very small front portion where the building is actually is industrial, but even towards their house, they've had, like, lights strung up, and they've had huge parties back in there on their residential property as well. So, it's just, it's become a huge problem.
Sean, we should definitely be able to address the parking on the residential, correct?
Yes, sir. Very much so.
With what we currently have on the books, and I know, Doug, we're currently working on the noise ordinance, and hopefully we'll have that done soon.
That's great.
So, we are working on some things that should help address some of these issues for you.
Okay.
And, you know, my point of view is, I've always thought that you, as a homeowner, should enjoy your house and your area, and I always stand up for the homeowner, so I'm actually glad that you, you all have come here to talk to the council tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, seriously, like, a few weeks ago, I told my husband, we've got to move. We cannot keep doing this. This is insane for our kids to, we can't sleep on the weekends. So, um, and I know that your police officers should have multiple police reports of this situation, so I'm sure they can probably gather details for you as well, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia? Terry Ford? All right, did I miss anybody that signed up for public forum? All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Ben?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and be approved.
Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. How long do you think we need for a recess, Dee? Eight minutes? Or Sean? Do you think we need a little longer?
Ten minutes should be fine, Sean.
All right. I would ask for a ten-minute recess, um, so that we can break and come back as landbank. Brandy?
Make a motion to take a ten-minute recess.
And Ben?
Okay.
Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. City Council, and we will move on to new business, item twelve, which is discuss and receive Land Bank Treasurer's annual report to the governing body as required by KSA twelve dash fifty-nine oh three. Dee?
Marla is the treasurer. Kansas statutes require the landbank to make an annual report to the governing body by January thirty-first each year, including a report of the audit, receipts and dispersments from all funds under its control, reflecting all property transactions that occurred during the year, and an inventory of all property held by the landbank. It also requires the inventory to be published by January thirty-first each year in the city's official newspaper. I've placed these documents for your annual report inside your council packets. The first item in there, statutes require an annual audit of all landbank receipts and dispersments, so the first item in here is the audited financial statement. This is part of the, of the city's annual audit, it's incorporated into our financial statement. If you remember, our auditor was here and handed that out to you, this is a document in that. The city received an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of counting under the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. The schedule is as of twelve thirty-one eighteen because that is the last audit we had. Two thousand and nineteen books are not yet closed, and the audit won't happen until probably mid-March. So, it seems a year behind, but it's the most recent audited financial we have. The next page is receipts and dispersments register. This reflects all cash transactions of the landbank through the end of two thousand and nineteen. There will be one additional entry in two thousand and nineteen, and that is the interest the funds in that fund have earned. Um, I have to wait till pretty much everything for two thousand and nineteen is posted to the books, so I take the, the cash balances in all funds and parate the interest based on balances, so I won't know that amount for a while yet, but it's not going to be a huge amount. Before interest is posted, the balance is seventy-two thousand, eight forty-six, sixty-three at December thirty-first.
Does anybody have any questions for Dee? Is there any discussion around the treasurer's report? The recommendation to receive and vote for treasurer's report. Ben?
Yes, I'd recommend that we receive and file the treasurer's report for the end.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Dee. That brings us to item thirteen, which is discuss and consider a resolution for the sale of the land to the Derby Land Investment Group. Doug?
Mayor and council, uh, this is a wrapping up of an existing industrial revenue bond issue. Uh, the official title to it was the Express Inn and Suites Project, also known as the Quality Inn, and, uh, those bonds were issued in two thousand and nine and have paid off in full. Uh, as you might be aware, during the time that the IRBs are out or the bonds are out, the city holds the project, holds title to the project as security for the bonds, and when the project, uh, when the bonds are paid off, uh, the tenant then has a contractual right to pay the city one hundred dollars and get the property re-conveyed back to them, property that they initially developed and, and constructed. Uh, that's what this is about. Uh, this is, has no fiscal impact other than the receipt of the city, by the city of a hundred dollars, uh, and I would recommend that you adopt the resolution, which authorizes then the mayor to execute the appropriate documents to consummate this real estate transaction.
Jim?
I don't have any questions, and it sounds appropriate, so I move to approve resolution ten forty dash twenty twenty of the governing body of the city of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Derby Land Investments T. V.
Okay. Brandy?
I second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye. And that resolution passes seven zero. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Marla. That brings us to item fourteen, which is discuss and consider economic incentive, incentive for cutting-edge lawn care. Sean?
Yes, sir. Nick Thomas of Cutting Edge Lawn Care, Inc. has made application for a property tax exemption for economic development purposes with the intention to purchase land in the amount of three hundred thousand and ultimately construct a building valuing approximately three hundred and fifty thousand located in the sixty-three-hundred block of Armstrong Circle.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salsetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye. And that resolution passes seven zero. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Marla. That brings us to item fourteen, which is discuss and consider economic incentive, incentive for cutting edge lawn care. Sean?
Yes, sir. Nick Thomas of, uh, Cutting Edge Lawn Care, Inc. Has made application for a property tax exemption for economic development purposes with the intention to purchase land in the amount of three hundred thousand and ultimately construct a building valuing approximately three hundred and fifty thousand located in the sixty-three hundred block of Armstrong Circle. He has completed the required tax abatement cost benefit analysis. And based on a, even a hundred percent abatement, projects a positive benefit cost ratio of three point seven five. The business has been incorporated since two thousand and nine and the applicant has provided a favorable profit and loss statement and balance sheet. Resolution eighty-seven dash two zero one three established Park City's incentive policy, which outlines various levels or percentages of incentive exemptions based on capital investment, new job creation and export sales. Pursuant to that policy, Cutting Edge does qualify for a capital investment abatement of five percent, new job creation of seventeen point five percent, for a total exemption of twenty-two point five percent. Industrial revenue bonds are normally issued only on the value of the capital investment, but it is the council's prerogative to issue or include the increased value in the land. Given two different scenarios here. One, if you only consider the capital investment of the building three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A ten-year projection of all property taxes for the various different entities is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And a twenty-two point five percent abatement equates to just around twenty-nine thousand dollars absent any administrative or issuance cost of the IRBs, which are approximately about twenty thousand dollars. Conversely, if council were to consider the capital investment and the increased land value, the ten-year projection of taxes for all taxing entities now is closer to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And a twenty-two and a half percent abatement equates to fifty-four thousand one hundred and forty-eight. Again, absent any administrative or issuance cost. The information in the packet, uh, contains is both the applicant, and he is here tonight to address council. But it has his application, his profit loss statements, as well as the, uh, cost benefit ratio, uh, survey analysis done.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, you signed up to speak on this? Go ahead and come on up.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, obviously I'm Nick Thomas and I wanna thank you guys for the opportunity, you know, to discuss this abatement and incentive plan. You know, I know your guys' time is valuable, so I appreciate your time. Um, a little bit about myself, obviously, I've been incorporated since two thousand and nine. I started cutting grass when I was eight years old. I'm now going on, uh, year twenty-seven of doing this. Um, and I enjoy it quite a bit. I, you know, I put myself through college with it. And, um, I think right now we have roughly twenty-nine employees. So I've gone from myself pushing a lawnmower around town to, you know, quite a few employees. And I, and, uh, that's been fun. But, um. From what Sean, Sean and I have been in kind of some discussions and from what, um. You know, kind of what we've discussed on the twenty, the twenty-seven and a half percent. What I would, what I would love to see, um, is I would love to see either a hundred percent of the building or if we can, you know, fifty percent of the increase in land value and then fifty percent of the building. Obviously, one point three is your desired cost benefit analysis ratio. It, it three point seven five, that's roughly obviously three times, you know, what's, what's desired. Um, obviously the benefits to Park City, you have a higher tax base. What does that mean? More school funding, uh, better public infrastructure. Uh, obviously you have a higher local spend from employees that would be here from the business. Uh, you know, you're gonna have gas, you know, convenience stores, tool stores. Um, I purchase all of my vehicles at Don Hatton, so there's sales tax. Um, equipment, you know, with Murphy, uh, Murphy Equipment up on Fifty-third. Uh, obviously, we're going to create more local jobs. Um, with that, uh, you may have employees move from out of state, from out of city, come in. What does that do? That increases obviously, all that is is more discretionary income, higher GDP. All that does is help the, you know, help the city. And obviously then it makes for a lower unemployment rate, which we all love. By doing this, by offering this abatement or incentive, it would bring a fiscally responsible and an ethical company to Park City, which I think is important. Um, I, um, I think by doing that, it would be kind of a model for other businesses to see, you know, what Park City wants. You know, Park City's obviously pro-business and I think it would be a great, you know, a great thing. Another, another benefit would be obviously by, I don't know that there's really any lawn care businesses in Park City. Um, so that brings more access to, to service for Park City residents, um, which is definitely a plus. You know, we're growing and I've been growing a lot over the past, I don't know, seven, eight years. And by offering abatement, that, that obviously helps fuel my growth. And in turns, you know, in turn means more vehicles, more, more spending. Uh, you know, and I think while I value the, the numbers that are in the, uh, I guess the books of Park City for what your, your regulation says, I would ask that the council and mayor, you know, talk about offering a better incentive because I think the intangibles are definitely worth a lot more as well. And so that's, that's kind of my piece and, you know, I would love to, I'd love to, love to move here and become a, um, a piece of this community.
This should bring some good conversation. So does anybody from the council have any questions? Does anybody wanna open up some dialogue to what's been asked? Ben?
Yeah, I appreciate you taking your time to come here, uh, and to address us. Um, it's always exciting to see the prospect of new businesses coming to town. Uh, and as mentioned even in that, uh, a different type of service added. Uh, as for asking us to consider a different, a difference in the change of our tax abatement. Uh, I appreciate you being willing to ask because you don't get anything you don't ask for. Um, I'm not saying that I'm in favor. I'm just saying, hey, it's a good, it's a good step there. Just to, and I don't bother me you doing that there. Um, as far as on the, I was looking through the cost analysis and this is, you know, as far as am I looking at the building portion of it, the proceeds from the tax revenue on the property tax, obviously that's a decent amount. I guess my question or my concern is always when we get into, um, now I'm trying to go, I'm bouncing back between my packet or between the bottom and the top. So let me just get back to that part real quick. Um, when we're looking at, uh, the cost analysis, you know, proposed, there we go. Um, in the first year, permanent jobs created, uh, and such in over ten years. To me, anytime we're looking at that, that seems pretty speculative. Um, because obviously there's no way to guarantee what's gonna happen in one year from now, five years from, ten, ten years from now. So I don't necessarily look at that as a good basis, if you will, for, for approval. I think based on the fact of the property tax value, that holds a lot more weight to it because that is a consistent. Um, but, but again, the, the ability to bring in new businesses is a strong sell. Um, so I would, I would definitely be in favor of, uh, looking at this and considering this for approval, uh, based on that. Um, but those are my thoughts.
So you would support this, staying up to twenty-two point five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. George?
Uh, where's your business located at now?
Wichita.
Wichita. And Park City also has a Wichita, uh, code. Would you change all your paperwork over to Park City as opposed to Wichita?
As far as for?
As far as all your business paperwork, all your stuff, would it read Park City or Wichita?
I would imagine it would read Park City.
Well, if I vote for this, I'd have to. Because, uh, you know, in, in the past, I've seen people come up here and they wanna keep the Wichita dealer while they're getting tax breaks from Park City. And I would like that's right.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Tom?
Well, I just have the same thing and it would be, be addressing. And it has been a significant problem in the past because we've got dual zip codes and we're secondary on most of them. Um, I'd like to say there is another lawn care company based here now, so this would be our second.
You know, uh, as we've looked at the third quarter, um, of two thousand and nineteen of redoing our IRB policy, really the direction of the council was to make sure that we follow the guidelines within our current policy. And as we're currently waiting for the county and the city of Wichita to finally map out what their twenty-twenty plan looks like so that we can bring that and kind of see what offerings are gonna be available in the county. Um, I would say that we should, we should hang fast with our current policy um, and approve the twenty-two point five percent. Um, that would be in line with what we do. And we always talk about how much the city gives up. And the one thing I wanna remind council, part of our IRB policy is the business has to name Park City as their home. And if the business fails to do that, we can come back and revoke those IRBs that we issue. And I brought that up with Sean this evening on a current company that's in Park City that on their website has Wichita address. And we will be contacting that business and let them know that their IRBs are in jeopardy right now because of that. But I would say we have a policy in place. Until we change or adapt that policy, it is best for the council to stay with the policy and approve the twenty-two point five.
Jim?
I guess I don't have a lot to add there, but I would, I just wanted to voice that, man, I love that you wanna come here and I want, I wanna help. But I guess I'm a little apprehensive about getting outside of our current policies as well. So, but I, I see the math and I, I understand what you're, what you're asking.
And I, I guess I would ask, um, because obviously this is a huge, this is a huge piece of my decision-making process. And if, if the, I guess the cost of, the administrative cost of the IRB is twenty thousand dollars, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to offer me a twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar IRB. Over, over ten years, that doesn't make any sense. Um, I would rather invest my money in the stock market. But, so that's why, that's why I would really love the, the opportunity to have that increase or, or at least, um. I mean, if you guys won't go above the twenty-two, you know, twenty-two and a half percent, I understand. But, um, that's, that's a, a big piece in my decision-making process. And it's, I think it makes sense for the city, in my opinion. Obviously, I'm not, I'm not on the council, but I'm a, I have a finance degree and so I'm good with numbers and I understand it. Um, but, you know, it is what it is. And that's, I would love, I would love it, but I'd love for you guys to make your decision.
Tom?
I've got, in, in light of the comments that have been made by the city and yourself, are we at a spot where we need to make a decision tonight? Or is this something that needs to be discussed further between the city and the applicant? As far as the fees and stuff like that? Because I think it was said that it's approximate or something. I, I don't know if that's all fact.
We, we currently have an application. We have the applicant before us.
Correct.
It makes sense to continue dialogue or come up with some type of direction because he needs to.
And my question is, is if this twenty thousand is an actual cost.
Yes.
Then there's an definite impact.
That's after consulting with, uh, Sarah Steele Gilmore Bell to sit there and figure out.
That's the fee.
This is, right now, this would be one of the smallest IRBs that the city is considering or has considered in the past. So that's what she did based on and said, okay, at a minimum, you're looking about X amount of dollars. So when Nick and I talked about it, it's, it's a matter of, okay, is it worth the time and effort to come? He'd wanted to come before council and, and make his, uh, case to see if there would be willingness to go with a higher incentive, uh, percentage. Or if the council would be willing to, to entertain including the land or the increased value in the land as well. Again, those are not normally contained within the policy that the council adopted back in two thousand and thirteen. So that's why we presented it that way.
I'll answer your question, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay. More discussion?
Reason I ask my question, I'm, I'm gonna extend a little bit further is because we're kind of at an impasse now. Because if we go with what we normally would do, we're gonna make a motion tonight. We don't know if it'll be followed through on or not based on costs. So.
That is correct. If, if council makes a motion tonight to, to proceed forward, then the ball gets kicked back into Nick's court to sit there and say, we can go ahead and get a more formalized quote from the bound counsel. And then he can weigh those options, understanding what the economic incentive is versus what the cost would be. And then it's a financial decision that he gets to render to figure out whether he wants to proceed going forward or just come back and say, thank you very much, but no thanks.
And that, that's really why we have our IRB policy in place is how that we deal with each business the same way. And we have a level of consistency. The council has the ability to go outside of that. I would just caution, when we look at the business and the potential here, is this something that we should step outside of? And that's something that the council needs, needs to consider. Is there value in this to go higher in the IRBs? And we always talk about how we've just been given IRBs, given IRBs. And when's the time to do that? When we talk about revenue and cost, we look at mill levy all the time. We have to quit coming back to mill levy for budgeting expense. There is use in IRBs. It does stimulate growth. And most of that growth doesn't take place for ten years. Does the potential growth from this, is there a benefit to the city from that? I would say no. But the council needs to make a decision. And I think it's only fair to the applicant that we discuss and hash this out tonight instead of kicking it away. Anybody else?
George?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you wanna come to Park City. Um, that's one of the problems or things that we've been, been trying to work out is getting folks to come here. Um, I guess what I wanna look at is long-term. And you've had some, you've got some numbers down here about jobs created. How many employees do you have now? Twenty-nine?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
What do you see? You see thirty maybe over ten years?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
I mean, I've, I've grown, since two thousand and twelve, I was at three. Or, no, twenty-eleven, I think I was at three employees. And that included myself. I've gone, I've gone from that, you know, from one, from one mowing crew to four, to your, you, you name it. All, all my different pieces of my business. And, you know, I've got nineteen or twenty employees. I mean, it, it obviously fluctuates during times of, times of the year because since we're a seasonal business. But, you know, we do, we do it all.
So you're saying a lot of your employees would actually move to Park City over this ten years?
I'm not saying all of them.
Okay. Where are most of them, where are most of them live now? Are they just all over the place, Wichita?
But, but, but I know part of the, I know part of the report that, um, the cost benefit analysis that was done, it does include people moving to the city from, you know, to the state, uh, to the county. And obviously, that's all included in that final three point seven five, which is obviously three times your desired number. Um, am, am I gonna say, am I gonna say that yes, it is speculation? Sure. But if you look back at, at previous growth for me, like to address your concern, I've grown six hundred percent. I mean, so that's a much more modest growth rate on, on the cost benefit analysis than what I've grown in the past.
Okay, I'm just looking at hypothetical when you're saying X amount of employees are gonna move here. And you don't really know that. I mean, you could speculate.
Correct. And that's, and that was part of the, uh, the gentleman that, that ran the cost benefit analysis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was all stuff he pulls, you know, from, you know, nationwide studies and things, things of that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at some of these things that you may look at over ten years. I see the benefits to the city, the benefit cost ratio. I see that as excellent. My concern is hypothetically, we're saying these things, but will it actually happen?
I would say that it would.
That's why, uh, based on our own policy with a twenty-two percent tax abatement, I think is, is appropriate. Until we, maybe, and I don't know, based on what you're telling us, if. until we, maybe, and I don't know, based on what you're telling us, if this looks like it's going to happen. You know what I'm saying? Because hypothetically, you could say that, but we want to know, I'd like to have, see more concrete information. Maybe something more we can go on rather than hypothetically saying this is going to happen.
Such, such as? As far as your concrete information? What?
You have, if you have something that, let's say you decide you want to take the abatement, and maybe, are you, was this for 20 years or was this for 10 years?
For 10.
10. Maybe come back and look at it and say, okay, you've ran the numbers over 10 years and this is what has happened now, and maybe relook at it.
Thank you.
All right, Brandy?
I think for me, we need to stay within the policy. All the other companies that we've done this for were within our policy. So if we were to go outside of the policy for you, how much hot burn they're going to cause with our other businesses that we, we've done this for. So I, for me personally, I want to stay within the policy and keep it at that 22.5%.
And is that just for the building only or for the increase in the land?
I think for me, it's the building only.
Okay, Ben?
It seems, and again, there's, I have all the information on, in terms of this, so it, it seems that a lot of our IRBs have been around either warehouse or motel hotels in the, in the past up to this point there. This is kind of the first one. And maybe not the first one, but one of few that's outside that, that genre there. With that being said, what, I'm not closed off to the idea of going over 22.5. I prefer staying within the policy. But has there been instances where we have gone outside of our policy up to this point? That we are aware of?
Sean?
For, for industrial-type buildings, yes. But again, because of the fact this is a smaller request, a smaller application than what the city has received before in the past, it's a different, it's a service industry rather than industrial. So that's why this one's before council, because of the fact we have the guidelines, we have the policy that was established back in 2013, but this one is a little bit different. But again, the policy was derived with how much are capital investment, how much are new employees, and oh, by the way, are there any exports outside the state? Well, there's not exports here, so it's based on capital investment and new employee creation.
Because one of the things that does stick out, just looking through the financial portion, is the net profit that has been going on for several years. I mean, it seems to be a steady business there in, in that regard in terms of growth. And, and so I don't doubt that there would be new job creation there along that. I don't doubt that at all. There's no way to give us concrete future information. So I, I get that. I don't necessarily base it off of that. Is there a reason, or is there the, I, I know we can, if we decided to approve it, but the 22.5 is limited to the building portion. Is there a reason that we can look at doing?
The, the 22.5 is based on the value of the capital investment and the employees. So that, you take into consideration, it's, it's a range, but you take into consideration both even the land purchase as well as the construction of the building. That puts it in that 5% category for new capital investment. The, the other portion, the 17.5%, that's coming from the, the new creation of 10 employees over the 10-year time period to come up with the 22.5.
And what, what you're asking for is, is that the 50% of that correct?
Well, I, my, my original request was 100, because I had, we hadn't talked about the increase in the value of the land, obviously, from, from a previous appraisal. So my, my ask was, because the, the cost benefit analysis still looked good at 100% was 100% of the building. But going back after talking more with Sean on if we can abate half, 50% of the increase in the value of the land and 50% of the building, that was, that would get me, it'd be less than roughly 100% of the building, but it'd be pretty darn close.
And I think it's important to point out, what we just talked about, where that 17% came from, was the anticipation of the 10 additional employees. That's already an estimate. And we talk about, you know, there is, you are looking into the future and trying to make guesses. This 22.5 is based off guesses. If you go higher than that, you're anticipating more than what we have already projected for. We, nobody's got a clue if anybody's going to move here because of this. I mean, honestly, you can't even really consider that. What we're really looking at is employee growth. What does that do? You got to, this is not a business that is going to run big trucks, that's going to tear up roads and some of the things that we see in, in other areas when we do these IRB policies. But we have a policy, we're working on the changes for it, and at this point in time, I think it's best we stick with the policy. Anybody from the council? George?
Well, I think we have to be consistent. But I, I, I've learned the tough experience sometimes, when you're not consistent, you confuse people and you cause problems. So I, I firmly believe in consistency. If you're not consistent, you're going to have problems then.
Thanks, George. Tom?
Well, I've got one more question. I'm trying to remember, and I'm not going to, when we do an IRB, typically we include land in it, don't we?
Typically, when you start off an IRB, you use whatever the base year is when the, before the building's being built. And that's established your baseline. So you're giving an abatement for the increased value, the increased value.
Right.
In this particular case, the one reason why it's unusual is because of the fact it's starting off as raw green pasture. That right now has an appraised value of right around $50,000. And we already know what his contract purchase price is for the lot. So as soon as that is purchased, you assume that the county would come out and say, the land was bought for this amount, that now becomes its new appraised value. So there's an assumption there that, given the county, praiser's office would go out and it would be valued at $250,000 more than it is today.
Okay. Typically, in the past, when we've done IRBs, though, that value is included with the building if there's any difference between.
That I'm not certain of.
I know, we had one comment that I would do this on the, on the building only, but I think in the past, it's been on change of value in the total, total package, hasn't it? I, I, I can't remember. It's been a while since we've done that, and I don't know if Doug can help me or not.
Based off improvements on the land? Is that what you?
That's what we, that's what. And remember, everything we're talking about right now for the 22.5 is assumptions.
And I understand that.
So do you want to make more assumptions and grant a higher percentage, higher B?
But I'm also looking at doing a $5 million deal, dollar deal and a half a million dollar deal. They're, they're two different animals, too. I mean, same process, but they're different. So, and I was just trying to clarify, because I was trying to remember how we've done it in the past, because it's been a while since we've done one. And I can't remember if the land was included or not, so.
I know where, sir.
It would just be the change. Okay.
Jim?
I don't have anything really more to discuss, so I'm going to throw out a motion and see where it goes. But I would move to approve the 22.5% tax abatement for Pennington.
Yeah, wait a second. George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Tom?
That would include the addressing.
It's part of our IRB policy.
For me, sure. Thank you.
Sir, if I may, a clarifying point, 22.5% based on?
Jim?
The value of the improvements.
The value of the building, the construction?
Yeah.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you for coming tonight, especially Tom. That will bring us to item 15, which is discuss and consider approving an exterior grant program for 2020. Sean?
Yes, sir. Excited about this program. Since 2014, Park City has offered a home buyer's incentive plan that has been very successful in facilitating and promoting new residential construction in Park City. Based off that successful program of a neighboring city, whereas they funded 28 owners in 2019 who invested a quarter, a total of $335,000 for projects and improvements on their home, staff is proposing council create and adopt a complimentary program to our home buyers' incentive that targets or addresses existing residential neighborhoods by facilitating and promoting the exterior improvements. The proposed program would provide a 20% reimbursement for exterior improvements upon completion of the work. Homeowners would be required to have a minimum of $2,500 in combined repairs or renovations in order to apply. Residents would be reimbursed anywhere from $500 up to a maximum of $2,500. Once the city approves a project, the homeowner would have 120 days to begin construction on the project, and it would need to be completed by November 1st. In addition to filling out an application, the homeowner would also need to be current on their, on all their property taxes, as well as provide proof of insurance. And apartment units for this program would not be eligible. Eligible projects or improvements would include, but would not be limited to either painting, siding, window doors replacement, masonry repairs, awnings, building additions, landscaping, and new construction of a residence. Those items that would be ineligible, but not limited to, would include like playsets, play equipment, swimming pools, spas, sump pumps, foundation repairs, and lawn care or maintenance. For our 2020 budget that we're currently in, we have $95,000 budgeted for homeowners' incentives. Traditionally, the home buyers' incentive program has averaged about $57,000 a year, except for 2017 and 2018, where we spent nearly $121,000 or $150,000 respectfully. In 2018, council eliminated the incentive for duplexes in Bear Hill, as well as the leasing of newly constructed single-family homes. Council could elect to either have the home buyers' incentive program as is and fund an exterior grant program separately, or they could allocate any portion of the $95,000 that's already budgeted and divided up between the two programs. So staff recommends approval and creating of this program with the funding as council sees fit.
I am very excited about this. I know in the past, one of the things I always wanted to look at was an improvement district based off taxes, which really gets complicated. And you start going back and trying to figure out the improvements in a home and then trying to figure out what that cost was and how you adjust the, the taxes so they're not taxed off their improvements that they made to the property. This really makes it clean and sweet and easy to come back and encourage homeowners to make improvements. One of our biggest problems in the community has been code enforcement in dealing with issues of people not taking care of their properties. And I think people that reinvest in the community, their home, this is a good way to come back and reward those people that are making improvements. And in the end, it makes the city more desirable. So anything that we can do, a lot of times we cater to new homeowners, but what about the homeowner that's lived here 20 years, 25 years, that has seen some deterioration in their home? And they go out and make some expenses and improvements and re-site their house, new windows, and things of that sorts, that does not create blight within the community, but makes it more of a welcoming community. I think this is a great program. Sean came to me about this. Very excited and keen about the way it, way it goes, and I hope we can get this through this evening. Brandy?
I'd say I came and talked to Sean yesterday, and I told him I was really excited about this. I, I appreciate you bringing this to us. I'm, I think since we haven't spent all of the homeowners' incentive, I think we take the $95,000 and split that in half for this first year and see how this first year goes. And then as we're seeing after this first year, then we, if we need to create another funding source for the program by itself, then we look at it then.
The one thing I would say, if you remember, we do have a development that's got to put 30 basements in the ground this year. So that's going to be a pretty significant impact, because we know those homes are coming. We were slightly down for 2019 compared to 2018, I think around 20 houses, maybe a little bit more. I think this year, we're going to see a greater boom. So it might be something that I think this plan might get a slow start to begin with. It might be better to do a 60-40 or a 75-25 or something, because I think this will be slow in the beginning, but still allow us to continue new home improvement. And when we come back to budget for 2021, we look and see where we're at on this, and we're probably going to need additional funding for it. Ben?
Yeah, I, I dislike when you've been with a company for several years and you try to go back and get some of the deals that new people are getting, and they tell you no, because you've been with them forever. And so for that, I can definitely appreciate this idea of coming back to existing citizens and giving them the option of the availability for this. I do have two questions here real quick. And I know I was looking through there on the staff report portion of it. In the homeowner incentive, we eliminated duplexes. For this, it says not apartments, but would duplexes be included or not?
The only one that is prohibited under the proposed policy, council can do as it sees fit, but the only one that's prohibited would be apartments. Duplexes are a home, if they're making improvements to it on the exterior portion of it, it would qualify. Unless council directs otherwise.
And this would not be for actual homesteads in the sense of homeowners? If I am a landlord and like a, would that be something we want to consider?
If you're a landlord, and you're going to address up a rental property.
That, that's fine.
It's exterior.
I just want to make sure that, to see who is and who isn't included. So I don't necessarily care either way. I just want to make sure that I understand.
Rental apartments, not apartment complex, but I mean, resi- rental units, yes, those would qualify as well.
Okay. And then the last thing, question I had on this is, is there, would we be looking at a MAC, okay, never mind, there it is, the maximum portion. There, insurance-wise, is, is there anything that you should put in there just saying that there's an insurance claim that that would not qualify? If they were trying to use a, to, to get a reimbursement off of an insurance claim? For instance, if I had a hailstorm come through and I had to re-site my house, then I applied for the?
That's an excellent question. I didn't think about that one quite honestly. We'd have to research that to figure out and make certain that it's not covered, that it's, somebody's not waging, turning in a claim that's covered by something else.
Yeah. And I, I think too, when we look at duplexes that we currently have in the community, the majority of those are all brand-new duplexes. So I think just to keep the language clean and simple, I would eliminate duplexes from this, for this first year especially. And then if we go back and update the new homeowners' policy and we want to make some tweak that, that we fall in suit, that way we have the same language in each one. Because that, and if you look, most of those duplexes are within five years or less, so they're all in pretty good shape at this point. But I, I would agree with Ben. We don't necessarily want somebody capitalizing on a catastrophic event that created doing that. We want somebody that went out on their own and was making improvements within their home. Tom?
I was sitting here and getting ready to ask the same question, because I'm sitting here looking at, at the first, one of the bullets on here is non-apartment residential properties. And I think duplex would probably be an apartment style. So I was going to ask the clarification on that, and you just gave it to us. But we're looking at how many dollars total that we've got budgeted?
Right now, we have budgeted 20, for 2020, $95,000. In 2019, end of year, we spent approximately $57,000. So that kind of gives you an estimate.
So it wouldn't be out of line to do a $70,000 in a balance for something like this? $70,000 for new home rebate in 19?
As the mayor indicated, yes. We, we have that one new housing addition that's at 69th and Hillside where they, the requirement is, or the projected plan is for them to put 30 houses in the ground this year. That alone would be nearly $75,000 if every one of them were completed in time and every one of them took advantage of the new incentive, which we would expect them to. So 70, 25 split, that would be appropriate. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Then I got one other thing. There would be no, if I owned a bunch of properties out here, there would be no restriction on me coming in and applying for every one of them.
Only one property per owner, per year may participate in the program.
So that would be rental companies in all who count as one?
Yes, sir.
And I would say we can, I do think we should find a healthy split now and then see how this moves forward, and then if we had to come back and do some type of budget amendment because this takes off crazy, and then we do something, we could come back and do that later in the year.
It's, it's a good way to get started. The way that the program is designed in, in this neighboring city, that's, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. And our homebuyer incentives program has not done that way. And that's why for two years, we, we went and, wow, we had a lot of building going on. So if we want to stay within the budget, we could go ahead and modify the homebuyers and say, we're going to put X amount of dollars in there and make it two on a first-come, first-served basis, as well as this program. So that way we can kind of gauge for the first year what, if we run out of incentives in two months' time, then we realize it's been a huge success, and we need to consider that when we go into budgeting for twenty twenty-one.
I'd like to say this is something that we've done with SCED before too, and they've come through and done some houses with other money. There was funded through other programs, it didn't cost the city. So I'm assuming this is going to be run something like that, but different qualifications, so.
Tom, are you good?
I'm good.
Jim?
It's a pretty slick idea. Appreciate you guys coming up with that. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we move to approve the creating of the exterior grant program with a twenty-five percent allocation of the existing budget towards it and excluding duplexes. If they got it all.
Just for simple math, could we throw a dollar amount versus a percentage on that?
Yeah, what is it, twenty-five thousand?
Yeah. Twenty-five percent. I would imagine it would just be the twenty-five thousand.
You're right, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And do you want to exclude duplexes and any homeowners that are making improvements because of an insurance or catastrophic event to their house?
Yes, I'm just not quite sure how to word that, but yeah, I think that's wise to exclude that.
Doug, do you have any suggestions?
Yes, I think the, the program is for improvements. Replacing damage that's done by a storm is not an improvement, that's a repair or whatever. I, I don't think that we need to change the wording at all. I think it's, plus your discussion here makes it clear, if we ever need to talk to somebody about it, that the council's intent was crystal clear that this was not going to cover monies that homeowners spend to repair damage done by some casualty, which they're reimbursed for, you know, in whole or in part. And so I don't think we need to change anything.
Okay, so Jim, just to exclude duplexes and twenty-five thousand towards that?
Yes.
George, did you want to second that?
Yeah. I'd like to say something.
Go right ahead.
I, I prefaced this by saying, you know, I represent the older part of town. And I got a good memory. And, you know, I, I bit my tongue on this, but I remember coming to this council and wanting to spend a few hundred dollars to encourage people to paint some of the houses, and I got shot down hard. I got shot down hard. I was told that we shouldn't be using taxpayer dollars for this, but I want to say, I support this. I supported then, but when I say when you're not consistent, it confuses. And I'm confused why my few hundred dollars that I wanted to help buy paint for some houses were shot down. And I felt humiliated when I left the council that night and why it's okay now. I don't understand. I, I, Sean, I fully support this. I think it's a great idea. I thought it was a good idea to help buy paint for some of those houses, but I got shot down hard. And now I'm confused. I'll shut up.
Okay, Tom?
I was just wondering how much money we're going to end up divvying each way on the split with twenty-five taken out?
Twenty-five thousand for the new program, seventy thousand dollars for the homebuyer incentive.
Okay, which would not be enough to cover the houses we're having on, planned on being built in a few. And if there's any additional houses anywhere else, there won't be any money available. You want council to be aware of that?
And that's why we talked about if we need to do an amendment, and we left it heavy on one side to cover it. Ben?
Yeah, I, to George's point, he's been an early proponent of this program. I remember him mentioning that about a year and a half ago, about bidding for the residents specifically there that he's noticed in Ward Three, but not just there, it's happened across the board. So George, thank you for your work on, on bringing the attention to this, kind of a, ahead of the curve on that. So thank you for that. But my point and question was more to, I, I use the insurance person point as an illustration, just simply because that's the world I've come from. But my point being is, is how are we going to do this if, if applicants are receiving financial compensation to do the, to do their repairs or improvements from other organizations? I, I said insurance because that's the big one, but I mean, there, there's other organizations. Are we, are we, do we care about that or do we not? I mean, if I'm getting subsidized seventy-five percent from, let's just say, Menonite Housing to do this work, and then I come apply for another grant from the city, that, that was really my, my intent. I used insurance, but my intent was more just a question is do we care to that or not?
Doug, can you add any comments to that?
Well, it's, this is a reimbursement program, and I, I know it's just bullet points that Sean has here, but we, we require receipts, and if you're getting subsidies from somebody else, you're not paying that. So to me, we would apply our twenty percent to what they paid out of pocket. So if they had a five hundred dollar grant from, from Menonite Housing, for example, then that would not be money that we'd pay a hundred dollars for. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's clear enough on the bullet points here that that would be the intent that we would use to administer the program.
Yeah, we pulled it clear enough. That, that was just my intent in asking the question either. The insurance, it, insurance question was, was that there? But again, if, if we all feel comfortable, that's fine with us.
I think Doug kind of nailed it earlier when we really talk about improvements versus repair. And that's what we're going to have to look at in that process. Okay. We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. That brings us to item sixteen, which is discuss and consider a waiver of generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP, for the twenty twenty financial statements. Dee?
Under Kansas statute, cities are required to prepare their financials under generally accepted accounting principles. They're also allowed to waive that if they have no other resolutions or ordinances that require GAAP basis financials. The city of Park City does not. Staff recommends approval of resolution waiving GAAP for the twenty twenty financial statements.
This is something we do on an annual basis, and with it being January, this is a normal activity that we have to come back with. Tom?
I'd make a motion that we approve resolution number ten forty-one dash twenty twenty, waiving the requirements for KSA seventy-five dash eleven twenty A A for the city twenty twenty financial statements.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Randy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
Now, resolution passes seven zero. Thank you, Dee. That brings us to item seventeen, which is discuss and consider approving the Federal Highway Administration and Kansas Department of Transportation Primrose Park impact finding in support of the Wichita North Junction project. Sean?
Yes, sir. Last October, council received a briefing from KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration on the North Wichita Junction project. During their presentation, KDOT had indicated how additional funding had been made available. So what they wanted to do was get all the right-of-way purchased for all three phases. One of those particular pieces of property is a small portion of our Primrose Park. So, but because it is designated as parkland, both KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration were required to allow for public comment for thirty days, if you remember. And so that thirty day commenced on November twelfth, it completed on December thirteenth, and neither the city nor KDOT received any comments. Given no comments, it's the intent for KDOT, KDOT to seek concurrence on a de minimis finding from the Kansas, or Division Office for the Federal Highway Administration. If council concurs with that finding and the project's proposed right-of-way acquisition, if it's your determination that it will not adversely affect the activities, the features, or the attributes of Primrose Park, they're requesting that the city provide a letter to that intent. So behind in your packet is a copy of a letter, and so if council concurs with that finding, staff is recommending that you authorize the mayor to sign the letter, and we can forward it on to KDOT.
Melvin and Tom are both in some of those meetings. Go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to make a motion we approve to concur with KDOT's intent to have a de minimis? Okay, finding the authorizes, the mayor to send a letter back.
Okay, Melvin?
I'll second that. All they are really is taking some right-of-way, and it's not getting any close to the highway or to the residents, really. Speaking of...
I was going to comment to that, yeah.
Yeah, not at all. It's, it's...
So it's not...
It's realistically only the eastern thirty foot of that property, which is on the eastern side of the hedgerow. So it should be no impact to Primrose Park. But by allowing this letter to go forward, now we can start with the normal acquisition process to where they can negotiate with the city to compensate the city for that portion of the right-of-way.
Our concern is a little, little more noise or something, but it's not going to impact any, so I approve it.
Thank you.
What, what that's doing is allowing for a little additional right-of-way to swing the southbound one thirty-five on the westbound two thirty-five exit and give it a little more boundary between the park and, and the roadway there. Won't even miss it, so.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item eighteen, which is discuss and consider an ordinance to respread high-rid second edition special assessments. Dee?
Well, like a boomerang. On October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, council approved an ordinance to evenly respread the future drainage specials on the high-rid second edition properties in the land bank. Staff has since been made aware that specials from the year the land bank acquired the properties, which was two thousand seventeen, can be respread to future years. Delinquent years two thousand thirteen through two thousand sixteen cannot be respread since those years were prior to the two thousand seventeen acquisition. However, the proposed ordinance, if adopted, will evenly respread the two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-eight special assessments to years twenty twenty through two thousand twenty-eight. A more even distribution of specials will impact the amount of funds that can be transferred from the land bank to the bond and interest fund where properties are sold in the future because only the amount of the specials on each of the specific lots sold can be transferred. Sale proceeds in excess of, in excess of those specials must remain in the land bank fund and are therefore not available to assist in making the bond payments related to the drainage improvements previously made on those properties. That's how we arrived at the seventy-two thousand in our land bank that we was on the agenda earlier. I might clarify for you that this is not all of the properties on this ordinance. It's only the ones that we can respread. We cannot respread to properties that were not previously assessed drainage because they are not in the improvement district. So while our goal is to try to get them as even as possible, this doesn't hundred percent fix that issue, and we can't hundred percent fix the issue because some of the properties have zero drainage. We also have the delinquents from the older years that are not allowed to be respread, and some of those have anywhere from zero to over seven hundred dollars per property. So this is just kind of the best we can get it to, so.
And in doing this, it really helps us when we start pricing these lots, when we want to sell them into the future. It just, it just makes it easier to try to calculate what those costs are because we've kind of been a little bit in a guessing game in years past trying to break those down, and I think this is going to give us a clearer picture when, when we have somebody approach us that's interested in purchasing and stuff like this. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number ten eighty-six dash twenty twenty, respreading special assessments against properties in high-rid second addition to the city of Park City and repealing ordinance ten eighty dash twenty nineteen.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare. George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Randy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes seven zero. Thank you, Randy. That brings us to item nineteen, which is discuss and consider a special workshop to evaluate the alternatives for the construction of the sixty-first street and Broadway intersection. Sean?
Yes, sir. As council is aware, WSP recently completed an intersection control evaluation on KDOT project number zero eight seven, November zero six nine one dash zero one. The study evaluated various intersection configurations and traffic control alternatives for sixty-first street and Broadway based on the review of existing conditions, traffic operations, safety, and total cost. We had the meeting last week, and there was some direction for staff to go forth and get some additional information and then bring it back. So we're proposing to hold a second special meeting a week from tonight on the twenty-first at six o'clock in the evening.
Ben?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate the workshop last week. And to those of you in the public that are interested in, in learning more, I, I found this conversation very informative over the last, well, we've been talking about this for a little while, and just learning about some of the traffic control issues there. And so I encourage people to come out and so come out next Tuesday because I'd like to make a motion to approve scheduling of a special workshop to discuss alternatives for the construction of the sixty-first street, north and Broadway intersection on January twenty-first, twenty twenty, at six P M.
Jim?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes seven zero. Marla will have the form for everybody to sign this evening on that special note, special meeting. If you can make sure you sign that before you leave this evening. Next item on the agenda is just governing body reports, and we'll start with Jim.
Nothing to report tonight.
Randy?
Nothing tonight.
George? Tom?
I saw the latest presentation tonight, this afternoon, on the North Junction and how that's going to impact us there at that park. There's no impact really, but I've got pictures of that. I'll provide to Sean if anybody'd like to see them, so.
It might be something we can throw on the website, too.
They have their own website.
Melvin?
I don't have anything.
Ben?
I just want to welcome Zach to the city there, looking forward to working with you. Got to know him dear, a couple of years back, and a great addition there. I'm looking forward to that. And I want to say thank you to the citizens that came out here this evening and have voiced their concerns there, or, or just came and participated in the meeting. Enjoy having those faces here to, to hear from, and then also just to see and appreciate the feedback. I also got to meet little Jericho, who was here a little earlier. He came here from Chisen Trail on his own tonight because he wanted to learn more about the city. And so just a neat little, little guy. So thank you all for coming out.
George?
Yeah, I also want to, I appreciate the citizens that have come out, voiced their opinions. We need more of that. And also I want to welcome Zach to City of Park City. Thank you.
Yeah, it's exciting. And I got to go to school with Zach, and then Mayor Rice and I worked together years ago. So it's just neat to see all the connections and the longevity of residents within the city. With that, I then attain a motion to adjourn. Ben?
Removed.
And George, you were there for a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you.